At this time, we begin our regular January 6, 2025, school board meeting. There again, there is no public comment. We've got to consider approval of the agenda. Dr. Heath, anything to add?
I don't have anything to add, no sir.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Mr. Tucker makes the motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Phelps, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next is recognitions for tonight, Dr. Heath.
Yes, our recognitions for tonight for support staff is from Flintville. Dr. Golden?
Good evening, everyone. We're going to be talking about Ms. Miranda Manderson. She could not be here tonight because she is in class. She is studying to be a teacher at the University of Tennessee Southern in the Grow Your Own program. And she starts three classes tonight, so she couldn't come. So I asked her, I said, Ms. Miranda, what would you like for us to say about you? She said, well, she spent the past seven years at Flintville School as an educational assistant, a role that she truly loves. She said, as a proud Flintville alum, she has had the privilege of watching all three of her children thrive academically within the supportive and nurturing environment of Flintville School. She frequently praises the exceptional staff at Flintville, noting how their dedication, passion, and commitment to student success makes the school a truly special place. In 2023, Miranda decided to take the next step in her own educational journey by completing her degree in elementary education at the University of Tennessee Southern, and she will be finished this August. Fueled by a desire to give back to the school that has made such a profound impact on her family, she is eager to join the team of educators at Flintville, hopefully this August. So that'll be Ms. Miranda Manderson. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Golden. Teacher of the Month is from Blanch. Miss Pardon?
I have with me today Ms. Tammy Nation. She is our school counselor, and she is not just our school counselor, she is the heart of our school community. She consistently goes above and beyond her responsibilities, embodying the spirit of compassion, dedication, and service. I have personally witnessed her ensuring that each and every child in need has a warm coat during cold weather, like today, often making it happen by the end of the school day. She waves her magic wand and it appears. But her care doesn't stop with our students. She extends her support to their families as well. Whether it's helping parents pay bills to keep their homes warm, ensuring running water or putting food on the table, Ms. Tammy is always there lending a helping hand. She also provides invaluable lessons to every student in our building, covering topics ranging from character education to internet safety and everything in between. Her ability to connect, excuse me, with students and staff on such a deep, personal level is truly remarkable. It's not something that can be taught, it is simply who she is. Ms. Tammy, thank you for your unwavering dedication, for the countless lives you touch, and for all that you do to make Blanch School a place for students and families to feel cared for and supported. We are very fortunate to have you. Thank you. And before we leave, I do want to give a shout out to two people that really helped Tammy. Trace Golden and Julie Miller really provide the support and help guide her in helping these families with all that they do. And they'll never forget Teacher of the Month, so I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
And now for our Retired Educator of the Month. Mr. Miller is going to make that presentation.
I'm here tonight to honor Ms. Emily Pierce, retired educator from Unity. Ms. Pierce shared with me that she knew she wanted to be an educator since she was a little girl. She went to college right out of high school and started her teaching career at South Lincoln Elementary. After 10 years in the classroom, she was offered the opportunity to go into administration as curriculum coordinator at Unity School. 12 years later, she became the principal at Unity, where she remained until her retirement last June. Ms. Emily also shared with me that she loved being a principal, but the days that she enjoyed the most were the ones interacting with her students. But am I really honoring Mrs. Pierce's legacy by describing in these few words what her career encompassed? No, not at all, and we all know that. To truly honor all that Mrs. Pierce has accomplished, we would need to speak at length about more people than would fit in this room or perhaps even in this school. Boys and girls, men and women, some of them now fathers and mothers themselves, teachers, lawyers, nurses, truck drivers, and the person that shows up when you call 911. They were all in some way changed by Emily's dedication to her students. For that, we owe her and so many like her a debt of gratitude that none of us can hope to repay. So thank you, Emily, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is our Student Board Representative, Ms. Emily Traill. Arien Patel, give us an update on things at Lincoln County High School. You know you're supposed to lob for a snow day, don't you?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Arien Patel. Today was our first day back from Christmas break. We'll be kicking off the semester with basketball homecoming next week. We'll be having various dress-up days and other activities for our students to participate in. Our FBLA and HOSA clubs have also begun preparing for their state competitions this spring.
LCHS basketball season has been going on for a couple weeks now. Last week, the girls' and boys' teams ended up with the win against Franklin County. We wish them luck for their upcoming games. We are ready and excited for the upcoming events in our January calendar. We also think that a snow day would be deeply appreciated by students and faculty. That's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Add them under the consent agenda. Consider approval minutes from December 2nd, 2024, board meeting; December 9th, 2024, special call meeting; the December 16th through the 18th, director interview sessions; and the December 18th, 2024, special call meeting. The others, consider approval of faculty use by de-force dance for the use of LCA June 6th through the 7th, 2025. We've got consider approval of out-of-state overnight field trips, one being Lincoln County High School Farm Bureau Board to San Antonio, Texas, 1/24 through 29/25. Lincoln County High School softball team Gulf Shores, March 9th through the 13th, 2025. Lincoln County High School baseball team Gulf Shores, March 9th through the 13th, 2025. Lincoln County High School baseball team to Hoover, Alabama, March 27th, 2025. And then consider approval of list of those items in our drive under title, nine items to be declared surplus. Do I have a motion to approve those in the consent agenda? I make the motion. Mr. Phelps makes the motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Miller, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. No other added items. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, earlier tonight in the policy meeting, we had two policies that are additions, Policy 3.2101, Special Advertising and Promotion on Lincoln County Public School Grounds. Also, Policy 3.210, Naming Rights. I recommend that we approve both policies for first reading.
It's coming for a committee and no second required. Any discussion after reviewing those items that are in your drive? Do I have a motion to approve them for the policy? Well, I don't, I need a vote. Never mind, I'm done sitting there and voting anyhow. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next is approval of our school activity funds audit, and I think Ms. Barnes is here.
Thank you all for allowing me to present the reports tonight. You should have each received four separate reports electronically. Just a few points I wanted to bring out. The audit report, we issued an unqualified, which made a clean, good opinion on the audited financial statements in accordance with the Internal School Funds Manual, which is the accounting rules and regulations compiled by the Comptroller's Office and approved by the board as the acceptable form of reporting. Few things in terms of the financial part. As of June 30, 2024, the combined, all schools had assets of $982,000, had approved accounts payable of $24,000, which left fund balances of $958,000. Of that $958,000, 397 was just the school's general funds, which are available for this general school use. The balance of $561,000 is for restricted funds, which are restricted for certain groups or clubs or athletics within the individual schools. And all of those funds are required to be self-supporting. I mentioned that fund balances were $958,000 at the end of the year, and that was an $82,000 increase over the previous year, meaning the revenues of all the schools exceeded expenditures by $82,000. Of course, within the reports, you have the combined statements, and also individual school reports, where you can, if you're curious to see how fundraising efforts win or how a particular club, their totals, that's within that, as well as any findings we might have had within the audit report. The other reports we have are the management report, which includes all the findings that were mentioned in the audit report, as well as any other issues we might have noted that we did not feel were material to be a finding and within the audit report. And I believe there was just one additional one. The governance letter that you have is, it summarizes just a lot of different issues related to the audit. The most significant are just any adjustments that we proposed and were posted as part of the audit, and then also any adjustments that we determined, we proposed but passed them because they weren't material to the financial statements. The last report is the Schedule of Cash Shortages, and this is required as part of the Highland Rim Investigation several years ago. And that report just reflects the collections on that judgment during the year under audit. That will be, we have to present that until that debt is paid or the school board forgives the debt, whatever happens first. So two more years, we should take care of that. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you all might have.
Anybody have a question there for reviewing the documents? Do I have a motion to accept?
I make the motion.
Mr. Tucker makes the motion, have a second.
Second.
Ms. Ashby, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Dr. Heath, discussion on the TISA outcomes of the budget.
Yeah, each year, you may recall the new funding formula, TISA funding formula. Each year in the fall, we'll receive what's called outcome funding, based on several things from the previous year. Students who scored approaching or below in the third grade TCAP, we get some funding for them because of, we have to pay for tutoring, because that's the logic behind it. Students who scored proficient and at certain levels of growth, some different things. And you'll see all this in your folder. The main thing I wanted to point out this year was the total on the four areas was $289,367. We really don't budget that because it's outcome-based, and we really don't know how much it's going to be until this, you know, about this time of year every year. So that's for this year's funding, though. So again, $289,367.
We have to, that's just for information.
It's FYI, yeah.
Next, Mr. Nick, on the financial reports.
Good evening. Just a little bit on my report. First up, for the 141 general purpose school fund budget amendments. First one is for $1,250, that is to set up CT's Rural STEM Collaboration, it's the Lincoln County STEM night. Next one's for $5,000 even, set up CT's Rural STEM Collaboration grant. And the last one there is for $80,000 even, is to set up CT's budget for donation from Aaron's company that was on the latter part of the 23, 24 year. And that's all I have for the 141.
Do I have a motion to approve those amendments?
Make a motion.
Mr. Phelps makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Miller, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries.
Next is the 142 school federal programs fund budget amendments. First was for $75,000 even, that's to set up E-Plan approved of the ATSI federal grant budget. Next was for $1,030.2, it's Budget Revision Number Two in E-Plan. And the last one's for $19,448.61, Budget Revision Number Two in E-Plan on the ESAR federal grant budget. And that's all I have for the 142.
Do I have a motion to approve those amendments?
Make a motion.
Mr. Thomas makes the motion, have a second.
I'll say.
Mr. Tucker, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries.
And lastly, are the financial reports for the funds 141, 142, 143, 146, and the 177 funds.
Do I have a motion to accept those reports?
I make the motion.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion, Mr. Miller, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Next, under points of information is, winter retreat is normally done in February, and along with that is the Director's Evaluation forms to review the strategic plan. Dr. Heath?
Yeah, I think we need some decisions on, do you want it on Saturday? Do you want it at night after a meeting? Or you want to push it back toward the end of the month, beginning of the next month in hopes that you have a signed contract with, and Mr. Sorrels could be here that night or Saturday, whatever, to introduce and talk, you know, whatever planning you want to talk about. I mean, I just need to know that. As far as Director's Evaluation forms, I, there's no, you can do one if you, there's no need for you to do one this year unless you just want to. But I think that the time could be better served doing something else there. And then the strategic plan, we will have that on that day or those nights, whatever your retreat is.
Anybody got dates they want to look at in February?
Prefer not the first week if possible.
What about the week of 17th? Anybody got?
What timeframe are we looking at?
Well, we might have to have another one if we add so much to it, but right now, it'll depend on what we add to the agenda. I mean, you can do it one night normally unless something gets piled on.
We have done it in conjunction with board meetings.
Yep.
Which would be March 3rd. Unless, do we have a date for the February board meeting?
February 3rd.
February 3rd.
3rd, okay. Because there's been times, yeah, that's.
You want to go on Saturday or you want to do it in the evening?
I'm good with the evening.
I am too.
On the 17th or 18th?
17th is President's Day.
18th is.
February 18th.
February 18th at 5:30. And while you're on dates, what dates do you want to do the convene on the committee on the contract? If you're on that, it'll be, let be seven days from today's date at least, or tomorrow's date, I'm sorry. Let be after the 14th.
I don't have any objections.
If there's any way we could have it on something other than Monday or Tuesday, that would be great, because I teach in the evening.
It'd be the 16th of January.
Are you going backwards?
No, this is for the salary.
Oh.
Contract.
January the what?
16th, what? At 5:30.
Are we doing this as a committee meeting or a special? Are we doing this as a committee?
This is a whole board meeting.
So a special called?
Mm-hmm, yep. 5:30. Then next on board information is board members doing the self-evaluation, it's on TSBA site, and then we'll skip over the Director's Evaluation form. And then Dr. Heath is update on how to real construction.
Yeah, Mr. Bryant's going to give that for us. Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Highland Rim's coming along pretty well. We've got sections A and B in paint. The ceiling grid is in, infrastructure above the ceiling grid's in, fire alarm wiring is in A and B. Most everything's in A and B with the exception of the tile. A small hiccup of that, in that we had two lots and we had to send, we just had to tell them we were not going to take two lots because the color will never ever match. So it's been reordered and they're trying to expedite the tile. So A and B is the good news. C, we got a roof on all sections of C now with the exception of the gymnasium. And the reason it's not even, the reason they hadn't started that is because their insulation got wet because they didn't protect it well. And so we're kind of held up on the gym roof, but the roof is by and large on C. So we're beginning to do some things in C, which is the gym cafeteria area, if you're not familiar with that, the back of the school, basically. So we're coming along pretty well. We've hit a few little bumps. We had a little bit of a prayer meeting Friday in that our electrical contractor told us an untruth about our switchgear. We've been told for the last four months that our main switchgear was sitting in Nashville. Now, that was a farce, and it is not sitting in Nashville. But I am pretty happy to tell you that there'll be two generators on site tomorrow, one for section A and one for section B, so that we can get that heat on and progress in section A and B. We've been waiting on the heat. And they wouldn't put the switchgear in because the roof was not on C, but come to find out, they've been telling us a better than, it's just an untruth for about four months. It is not there, not expected to be there until the end of February. So that's kind of where we're at. Most everything's going well. Downside, if there's a downside, it's going to be the dirt work. We had a contract with SJNL when we began. They sold their company in the middle of the job to a company called Wiregrass, and unfortunately, they are not pedaling very quickly. And we've even talked Friday, like I said, we had a, we had a big, long day Friday, and we've actually considered, we're not there yet, we've considered talking to their bonding company at this point. That never works, but we, we're going to have to do something about the dirt work. It's just not progressing well at all. It should have been done a long time ago. But anyway, that's kind of where we are. Most every trade's going pretty well with the exception of dirt work and where we've been told a few untruths, and that's not last of the richest fault either. They were told the same untruth that I was told. We've been told that for months about our switchgear. The reason we can't put it in is because it's going to get wet. Well, that was not true.
Ricky, is there a estimated time that we can give the board a tour of the building? I mean, we probably should wait till the roofing is complete on section C, no? But when would that be?
I would hope that roof will be done in a month or less than a month, actually, but it just all depends on weather at this point because it's a modify, I mean, it's a, it's a white roof, and, which means it's a vinyl product, and you can't put it down until temperature is above freezing. It has to be above freezing to put it down. And you also have to put it down quickly because it's a different kind of roof. It's one I've never dealt with before. Basically, the roof inside the gym has the metal up there, I would call it expanded metal, it has holes in it. And it's supposed to be for sound damage, and it also uses a special kind of insulation. Much like house insulation, it cannot get wet. So whenever you do the roof on that gymnasium, you've got to be able to do the roof. So we're going to have to have about five days of temperatures above freezing that it's not going to rain in order to get that done. The new, if they told us the truth, they should have ordered the new fiberglass insulation yesterday, I mean, today. There was some back and forth about who was supposed to pay for the insulation because it got wet, but at the end of the day, it's the contractor's responsibility to cover up their stuff. So we went through all that Friday also. Friday was a red-letter day. I needed two doses of blood pressure medicine Friday.
So you think in a little, maybe a month to a month and a half, we can give these guys a tour of the inside?
I would say about a month, I think we'll be okay. Hopefully, we'll have, I know that they're delivering the freezers and the coolers for the kitchen this week. Should be starting to get those installed. After we get those installed, we'll start doing epoxy flooring in the kitchen area. Once we get that done, we'll start putting in kitchen equipment. So kitchen's tough to build. Cafeteria's not so much, it's just a big square. Gym's the same way. I mean, it's a big area, but there's not a lot of stuff in there. You get the floor down, get it painted, you're in pretty good shape. So, you know, we're, I would arguably say that we're a month behind to a month and a half at this point, most of that being dirt work. And I'm working as hard as I can to get it, to get them to come our way, but they just don't really care, just to tell you the truth. They just don't care. And I wish to goodness we had went with another contractor, not that the initial contractor wasn't a good one, what they sold in the middle of the job. And kind of, we were kind of, we were hurt by that quite a bit. So, anyway, any questions? I'd be glad to answer any questions I can.
Can you speak about Blanch football?
I can to a degree. We've been, we're going to rebid that or we're going to use the bid we have. I have a bid that is good. The last time we bid that project, we only had one bidder, and I had to beg that bidder to bid. But at the end of the day, that was one of my really great friends, and unfortunately, he died. He was in business with his son, and I've reached out to him, and we're trying, I'm trying to give him a little time just to see where he's at and see if he can, see if he still wants to do the job, if they want to do the job. If they do, I don't think we'll have to rebid it. We're going to have to wait till it, you know, warms up a little anyway. So hopefully, you know, they'll want to do it. If not, we'll rebid it. It'll only take about three weeks to rebid it. The problem is every time you rebid it, you get less bidders, and we were down to one the last time. So, you know, getting a bid that, that we can afford, the other bid, I think, don't hold me to this, I want to say it was $246,000 or $7,000. Pretty sure that it was one of those two numbers. I hadn't looked at it in a minute. But it's going to have to be a little warmer weather, so I hadn't really worried about that too much till, you know, give them a little time, see if we can honor the bid we got, have, or rebid it. One of those two things will be true. Thank you.
The stipend process?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
So when you complete a board member training, there is a stipend that you can apply for that state. The Board of Education would have sent you an email about how to go through that process. If you have questions about that, let me know, and I will help you as best I can. But they just wanted me to make sure you got the email, and if you had any questions, we can, we can work on getting that to you.
Dr. Heath, you've got the budget calendars.
Yeah, Jason, the budget calendar that you initially gave me, did it change any at all?
No, sir, I think the only, no, sir, I think the only real question was at the very bottom, which really doesn't apply to this board, was the commission meeting in May. We changed it on there because it's going to have to be changed because it's the same night whenever there's a, the Gatlinburg Retreat for all the commissioners have to go, we're supposed to go to Gatlinburg. So it's most likely going to fall on that date that we put on there. We just went ahead and assumed that they're, we're going to have to change it because it'd have to be moved back to the Tuesday after the Memorial Day holiday.
So none of the other dates changed?
No, sir. Everything else is the same.
Is accurate, man, for the budget.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't have anything.
I have a question. So are we talking budget at the February winter retreat?
Do I have a big question? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll move second.
Second. Want to miss Ashby? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Martha, what, why did you ask?